Okay, the waiting room is empty, meeting is being recorded. Planning and zoning are clear to both call your meetings to order.
Okay. Welcome, members of the Board of Appeals and welcome to all the members of the planning board in the public.
Yeah, and this is the special May, March 16, 2022, meeting of the planning board joint meeting with the ZBA. And the purpose of the meeting is to discuss the current zoning, the proposed zoning amendments. So here we are. And welcome, everybody. Welcome, everybody from the ZBA. You know, I think we're we're here, you know, Alan and I have had some communications. You know where we are in the process and we're certainly here to listen to hear what you folks, your thoughts, their comments and whatever about what what's been done. I'm assuming you've read some, if not all of the amendments at this point. So there's Ralph Wilmer from MAPC. These were our consultants. They've guided us really from the very beginning on a lot of these changes, discussed with us what, you know, the best practices are and what kind of current practices are for zoning bylaws. They see a lot of them all over the state. And so we obviously relied on them a lot. And they've done a good job.
Okay. Jason, take that. No, yeah, so we move forward tonight. As Jason said, we've had talks and a couple of times just chatting back and forth a little bit. And about what we agree and disagree maybe upon a little bit of where we're going to go tonight.
Hey, can I interrupt you?
What's that?
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
You are? Okay.
I am too.
You are. I saw that. Okay. Can people hear me if I get inside a little closer like this?
It's no better now, Alan.
No better. All right, we got a problem volume.
Yeah, it's not so good in an echo chamber.
Yeah, you sound very muffled, Alan.
Very mumbled. Okay, hang on. Let me, uh, let's take a pause here and go deal with that. I've got somebody here that's a little bit techie. You want to play with that? Amy, we're gonna have to go get the, get that. Yeah.
Might be the wrong microphone selected.
Get that to 100%. I'm going to have to call it. I can't have a vote.
Sounds fine to me. I think we're getting some feedback with other machines.
Yeah, I can hear Alan.
Well, now I can hear whoever just spoke. I can hear you very well.
Oh, you can. That's fine. Maybe I was too close, too close to the speaker.
No.
Now further away.
Same.
Let me try backing up.
No, it's it's not great now.
Oh, it's not? Okay.
No. Yeah, and this is Richard Allen. I can hear you. So that I don't I don't know what's going on.
I'm getting you good, Alan.
I can hear you fine, too.
I hear you.
I I turned my volume up, Jason. You might want to try that.
Turn the volume up, yeah. We're, but we're on 100%.
I hear I hear everyone fine except for Alan.
Okay, let me, uh, we're on it right now, Jason. Let me see if we can get that improved.
And apparently somebody else has the same.
Same problem? Okay.
Um, I actually just turned my volume up and I can hear Alan a lot better.
Okay, well, that's me. I can hear you. Oh.
Okay. My volume's all the way, isn't it? Yeah, well, yeah, oh, wait a minute. No, that's a little better. That's louder. Let's see what that did. See what you are now, Amy. Let me sit down and see what people have to that. And that's better. Jason, how are we, uh, I got the seat again. How are we doing now? Is that better, guys?
Team is up all the way. So it's up 100%. You know, Alan, I can probably hear you. Just just speak slowly, okay?
Okay, yeah. Okay. The point of what I wanted to do is is to say that as we get going tonight and that we're all volunteers. And it's great. The planning board's put a lot of time into this and the the Board of Appeals recognizes and appreciates it. And so when I get going and we'll try to do, you know, get, we disagree, but we're all, we're all friends. Let's disagree and and agree. And see if we can get some agreements before we get in front of town meeting. Okay, I guess I get going then. Jason, I mean, I think one of, should we go into, I mean, Jason's got the designated places that we talked about. We do have a few things in, in particularly one of the things that stuck out to me in a minor thing, Jason, to start start with, was in definitions. And it would be bulkheads. Uh, which it's something that I see a problem with. We we not had a problem with bulkheads historically. And they were admitted from the setback. You could project one into a setback. I actually see more problems taking bulkheads out of the things that are that are allowed to go into a setback because that would take a bulkhead and create a setback. If you follow me, so if the bulkhead sets, right now, the bulkhead does not set up the setback. The house does. And if you make it so the bulkheads are excluded from from the setbacks, then that could make it so that that will make it will make it so that the bulkhead sets up how far you are from that property line. And then you'd be able to bring your house closer to that property line by special permit instead of a variance.
Yeah.
So I see I see a problem coming forward where we haven't had one. Okay. Um, I'll leave that there.
Alan, let me ask.
We might ask, Alan, why it was removed in the first place? Was there a reason, a good reason to take it out?
And just one note before you get into the deep discussion, just so that everybody on the call is aware, some folks are coming a little bit later. Town Council Amy Questle is here as a resource for the boards and your discussion, as is Paul Orlando, the inspector of buildings. Both are on this call and available as you go throughout.
Great, thank you.
So, um, yeah, this is Ralph Wilmer from MAPC. The reason that bulkhead was taken out was because it was really, it, um, the term only showed up in the definitions. It wasn't addressed anywhere else.
There wasn't projections.
It should be in projections and it was not, but we knew that and we treated it as a projection, which is very important or else we're going to add four feet to everybody's starting point when they apply for when they give us an application. And that'll happen almost all over town because most of the bulkheads in the small lots are in the setback. So we would think you would leave it alone. Or else we're going to have a four-foot automatic increase in in people's existing non-conformities. And that'll put us into a special permit. And people will be adding on under the Gale provision. They're going to be able to get a special permit. So it's a mistake to take it out, in our opinion.
But, okay, as Ralph said, it wasn't absolutely zoning by law. And from what I heard, Peter, is that you you were in agreement with that.
It it needs to be in the bylaw. And if you want to fool around with bulkheads, I would say add it into the projections section along with the cornices and that sort of thing. We have been treating it for 30 years, in my experience, as a projection.
But but it hasn't been described as one.
It has been actually, if you read that carefully, it's described and implied.
But what I mean is it's not, I I just want to make sure Ralph is said they took it out because it wasn't mentioned anywhere else in the bylaw. Is that, was that the case?
Yeah, that that's why we took it out.
Well, we would ask that it be put back in.
Yes.
And perhaps add it into the projections section.
Should make.
What is a, I know a bulkhead with a with a seagoing vessel. What's a bulkhead?
It's defined in that in that definition that's crossed out on page three. It's defined as an access to a basement level consisting primarily of a sloping door. So if the basement access stairs, a bulkhead placed within the setback shall not exceed 42 inches above finished grade at its highest point. So we've never had a problem with bulkheads. And particularly because it can't be more than, if they're coming into setbacks, it can't be more than 42 inches. We've never had a problem with it, but I see I see definite problems coming forward if we get rid of that.
Good. So I I have a question. Are there other cases that came, you know, kind of presented themselves to the ZBA where you've been applying bylaws that weren't explicitly written, but were understood? I mean, I think it's important that, you know, we make, we cover a few of those.
Sure. In here, Denise, as it says, the bulkhead plate in the definition that that it's placed within the setback, it can't be more than 42 inches above finished grade. So we're talking about it being placed in a setback.
Right, but that's in the definition and not in the bylaws itself. And I'm just asking if there are any other instances of that.
Probably.
You can come up with.
Okay.
No.
Who knows?
You really need to come back to the definitions and alive in projections.
Okay.
One, one, one quick Zoom clarification. I know everybody's used to it in their own individual meetings, but as this larger group, it's really important that only one person go at a time. Helen and, uh, you know, and Mary are going to have to go through and do the minutes. And it's going to be a challenge if several folks are doing it at once. So just that general reminder with this different setting, please, one at a time.
I think we kicked that one a little bit.
I have a comment on that.
Go ahead.
Since you're talking about a definition, you're referring to a bulkhead. What about a doghouse?
What?
There is no relief for doghouses ever mentioned in the dog, in the bylaw.
A doghouse in the sense that it's attached to a house. I'm not talking about a literal doghouse. Alan, you know what I'm referring to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, a little thing. I mean, if you could have some little thing 42 inches high. I mean, you could have little storage places to put trash in. It's kind of a little thing leaning against your building. It's not attached. I mean, it's kind of, it's against your building. And there's really nothing in there preventing you from doing that. They make plastic ones. You buy them at Home Depot. A little, a real, a doghouse of like you say, attached to your building or really well, if it's attached, it would be, if it's a little portable boat, if it's a little portable doghouse, it'll be one thing. If it's attached to your building, it comes part of your building. You could argue that it should not be in the setbacks.
I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. The doghouse that I'm thinking of is actually built over a step down into a basement.
Sure. Right now, that's reading the 42 inches. All you have, you know, it it otherwise would have to be a setback.
That wouldn't work.
Yeah, if you start coming up with a gable roof, Harry, you know, you'd have to meet the setback because you're coming up higher than 42 inches above the grade.
And you better exclude doghouses.
All right, well, let.
We don't mention them.
Help yourself.
Thus, thus there would be a variance.
Here because are you guys, let me just ask you, Alan, Peter. Are, is your thought you go over the zoning bylaw now, line by line?
No.
What, well, let me just finish. Would it be better for you to submit comments like this, like regarding bulkhead? Written format so we can, you know, we can see them and, um, well, you know, all at once and not, you know, go through, I mean, assuming you're not going to go through the bylaw like this.
Oh, absolutely not. Yeah, no, this was, this was kind of made to make, meant to be a quick and easy. Get it back into definitions and then listed under projections. That's only a request, really. And that's enough. Really, no, I think we already kicked it.
Okay.
Yeah. So the next thing that we really come into, you know, really is, is the, as Jason has shown on the papers, that he's talking about the bigger one would be much bigger is ADUs.
I can't hear you.
Oh, ADUs, right. So accessory dwelling units.
Yeah.
That is really these are the places that, you know, as you showed on your, on your sheet, Jason, that's a place the Board of Appeals. Uh, you know, we do a lot of these, you know, we we get numerous hearings, even in, even in a year where you had the pandemic going on, we still got, well, we did about six of these, seven of these. And in the last two months, we've done well, the last three months and with this month here, we have, that's all we have is ADUs. Something's always been this handled by the Board of Appeals. It would have us staying home and not working while while you guys were at historic relevance, you know, a lot of this, I I'll give Ralph, you know, good, good credit for working on all this, but a lot of things the Board of Appeals does is based on past precedents and historic historic references from the board and what we've been doing for many years. Although we do change the definition of of an ADU. The implementation, we feel strongly should still be from the Board of Appeals and you don't use, you don't lose a lot of that. Now, we have 100 years of experience in our board. Uh, accumulatively, between this board, we have about 100 years. And losing that is not something that's kind of the flavor of Rockport. You can't just grab that from another city or town and plug it in. You can't just lose it when you just take and say, okay.
Oh, well, what what is your understanding of what was done with the ADUs? Just to make sure we're on the same page.
Well, the, I mean, the most important part, I think, is is who's who's handling it. And the Board of Appeals unanimously feels that we should be handling ADUs.
Okay, what, and Ralph, I'll let you chime in on this, too. The, when the the Housing Choice Act, which was signed into law, I think in 2020, um, try, is trying to make it easier for there to be affordable housing in communities, including Rockport. And one of the things that was requested, or they recommended, was that ADUs may not, no longer a special permit, but be made as of right. In other words, just like a building permit, there are criteria in the bylaw for ADUs both within a dwelling and also detached from a dwelling. And there are criteria in both of those. Actually, in the, at the public hearing on this, which was on the 27th of January, quite a bit of discussion among the members of the public about the ADUs. And we took that to heart and we we actually made some changes to the ADU provision. But basically, the the central premise is that ADUs, which used to be all special permits, no matter what, are now going to be as of right to promote uh, the ability for a property owner to have a dwelling unit without, you know, going through a special permit process. And that's what, that's what the state wants us to do. So if that's what you're concerned about as part of the ADUs, um, I'm just telling you what, why we did what we did. It wasn't because we were thinking, oh, we want to take stuff away from the from this ZBA. It was because of an overall philosophy and end result that ADUs are no longer going to be special permit, even though you guys have done it forever. There are no longer going to be special permit, that'd be as of right. That's, that's why that was changed. That explains it.
The, well, the question would be then, really, is it, is the ADUs, you still have special permit in two different districts? For ADUs, okay? The SFAA.
We, Alan, may I speak to that point?
Joe.
Alan?
Please.
May I speak to that point?
Peter, please.
Okay. The, uh, there is relief for freestanding ADUs provided by special permit for certain dimensional requirements that aren't met. There is no relief specified for internal ADUs, but I think there should be. And that relief is by special permit. There is also special permits required in the single rez, single rez AA districts for ADUs. So there is special permit requirements for that section, and we believe that it should be ours to work with. Secondly, I want you guys to know, we have been pushing for this for 10 years. We think it's a wonderful section. We're all for it. There's nobody that sees the housing problem in Rockport made that more than we do. And the ADUs we've had to turn down over the years have been heartbreaking. And now we have the right job. You guys did a great job with this. We're all for it. We just feel it's our special permit to give, not yours.
Okay, so Peter, what what you're talking about then, it sounds like at least you're in favor of the fact that now ADUs by and large are as of right, that that's that most ADUs will be as of right. They'll never, they won't have to no one's going to have to see any board, whether it be the ZBA or the planning board.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Inspector, and that's it. And then there are going to be certain protections built in which are in the law. What you're concerned about are the two instances. And I'm going to let, um, I'm going to let Ralph speak to this.
Wait a minute, I think I want to clarify, Jason, before Ralph speaks.
All right, let me just finish. What I'm, you're talking about are the two instances, one of which there is special permit relief for a for dimensional issues for a detached ADU. And there is special permit relief uh, for an ADU in the R double A district. And and by the way, there was a lot of debate. I don't know if you attended the public hearing, but there was a debate on that particular one because there were some that didn't want to allow ADUs at all in the R double A district. And there were others that wanted to allow ADUs just like it is in all the other districts as a right in the R double A. So this was kind of a, it was kind of a compromise, but Ralph, what, let me just, why don't you listen to Ralph and then, you know, we'll, we'll pick this up, you know?
Well, I think I, before Ralph speaks, I would like to, like to just, before you get going, Ralph, because I'd like to have a, have you speak. But I think I want to clarify what Peter was talking about so that we're all speaking about the same thing of what we're asking. Uh, the border correct is Peter said, the border appeals is welcomed by right and by special permit in every district. And that's what does get accomplished here. So the border appeals is in favor of this. We've always wanted this. We wanted it in every district. Uh, and the special permit, we we have fewer places we have to do by special permit. Although I find that I think a lot of these will end up with special permits anyways because they may be looking for a different, 900 square feet and the square foot stuff in downtown districts is is some stuff that might be big in some of those districts. And then, and then in other districts, this might be small. I I sense that we'll end up seeing a number of these anyways at the border appeals level. Uh, if we get switched to border appeal. So, so as Peter said, we're, we're, we're in favor of the idea of of this being doable by special permit or by right. And I think that, but the border appeals wants to handle it. We always have, and we want to continue handling ADUs. That's it. There is other things in that bylaw we might want to talk about. The demand for ownership is a separate issue. I want to talk about that one afterwards.
Ralph, do you want to chime in on this?
So, um, just wanted to, uh, you know, agree with what, uh, what Jason said, that the, uh, the policy level decision from the, uh, housing choice legislation is to increase uh, the ability for communities to, uh, you know, make it easier for the permitting of of different types of housing. And that's the genesis of where this came from. And it sounds like the zoning board is, uh, you know, generally in favor of of doing that. Um, when we get involved in writing bylaw provisions for ADUs, what we have typically seen across the board is that, uh, any, uh, review and permitting of those types of uh, dwelling units are typically done by a planning board. And that's why we suggested that, uh, any special permit that would be needed in the two instances that we've talked about in the one zoning district, the SFAA and the special permit for the detached ADU. Typically, when these bylaws are written, that jurisdiction is with the planning board. That's where that idea came from, and that's why it was written that way.
We can only say that we, yeah, agree with everything except the last divided. We don't believe that it should be, it's in a town, it hasn't been and elsewhere in the state. But we're Rockwood and we, uh, for the planning board, Board of Appeals still feels that, uh, that the, a body that has been appointed is compared to a political body that has to answer the public as it's a planning board. And it should be the one in charge of this item. And so we, we're unanimous in our, in our position on this one, that we, we really, we, we want that. Uh, be the people that issued relief for ADUs.
Yeah, and you know, we, we hear you guys. We're not going to make any decision tonight, but we hear what you're saying and, and, you know, it's meaningful. So, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't have a meeting this month. You would, you would have to be gearing up for these two that we got coming up on the last Wednesday of this month. You'd be doing it. It's a two-family, it's a multi-family. We're going to want, if the multi-family's on the housing balance, it's going to be the same situation, same conversation. So kind of unanimous on that. Aaron, did you want to start here?
No.
I think we can move on. We've made our point, Alan.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good with Alan. Um, okay, I guess we get to, uh.
We, we want to be supportive of this bylaw. We think it's 99% there. There's some changes that need to be made. We want to be able to get up to town meeting and support.
Uh, Ralph, or somebody, I, why, why the, um, the forever homeownership, oh, yeah, the person lives on the site and has to own both of the accessory dwelling, where they can live neither one. But the part that they can never condominiumize, why do you, what's the big benefit? I I see a, I see a negative in this, that, uh, young people, with people with lower incomes, old or young, uh, could be wanting to move down into small houses and and the young people need to get into some small place. And sometimes homeownership can lead to a house that's better maintained. And so, um, what's, why do we have the emphasis that that these can never be sold off as a condo? Someone can answer that one?
So, so I can answer that, Alan, if if I may, Amy Questle, Town Council. Um, because if you have separate ownership, you have two principal dwellings. So for it to be accessory, it has to be accessory. So you cannot have them in separate ownership.
Well, if we have accessory dwellings all over town, that once you, if you have a two-family, three-family, four-family or an accessory dwelling anywhere in town, they can, and if it's an approved new dwelling unit, someone can condominiumize it anywhere in town.
Then it's not accessory. It's no longer accessory because
at that point, it's no longer, it's just a small, yeah, a smaller.
Right. It's just a separate unit, but it's, it's a principal, it's still a principal dwelling unit. So for this to be an accessory dwelling unit, it has to be owned by one person. And in fact, your, um, in fact, this proposed zoning bylaw um, is a little bit more generous than many that I have seen because obviously we're, we're seeing these all the time now because of the Housing Choice Act that that's, you know, requiring that that these be implemented. Um, a lot of them say that the owner has to, you know, has to reside in the main structure. That, you know, the, the big, the single family house and cannot reside in the accessory dwelling unit. But your, um, your bylaw does not acquire that, which I think is 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 a positive of yours.
Amy, a question, the only question I would say is that when we approve right now an accessory dwelling unit on the property, you're saying then that they then did happen to sell this little garage or barn. Then, then it's, uh, I mean, that's legal.
No, they can't. They can't sell it without an A and R. They have to, they have, they can only sell a lot of acres of land with the dwelling on it. So there's no way they can sell.
They're not, they're not selling, they're not, they condominiumize.
Condom, then they're still, that's definitely not an accessory dwelling anymore. That's a condominium, which is a separate use.
So if you have three, three units on the property, you have five units on the property, wherever, you're saying So if you have three, three units on the property, you have five units on the property, wherever, you're saying if one of them's in a separate building and it got approved years ago by accessory dwelling, as an accessory dwelling, that that unit cannot be sold off as a condominium or any, or any of, they condo this whole property.
No, it shouldn't. It would be determined, and that point, at that point, it would no longer be an accessory dwelling. It would be a multi-family, the lot would be considered multi-family or it would be multiple principal uses. There would, there would most likely be a zoning issue at that time.
Okay, Amy, what's, you have any other comments?
Let's move on.
Yeah, let's go on, let's go on. Well, yeah, okay. Parking, yes, parking. Uh, what the bookings mentioned is going to the planning board. We write some really small decisions. We take places like Buddy, Buddy Woods owns, owns a little property in Baskin neck.
We, we really can't talk about individual properties because they were not listed on the agenda, unfortunately. So everything has to be hypothetical.
So, we have some properties that come in front of us parking, okay, and they change use to go from, you go for hot dogs and they go to t-shirts, okay? So in these little changes of use, you know, you, you review them and you give them, you give them a decision. You know, where are you going to put trash and all these things for a restaurant to use of some sort? And, and then if it goes on to a use that's, whatever, whatever use you end up doing, doesn't matter, the end, it'll require a special permit usually. But tied on to that, you end up writing one that's a no-brainer. You have to give them relief for parking. Why? There is no parking at Baskin neck, not only shops at parking. So, you know, it's a, it's a small thing and to send them on to a, another board to do that. These, these requests usually come from little people, uh, or people with small things downtown. And they usually really come running into us right before, uh, late on Memorial Day weekend and they want to get open. And they didn't realize what the little change used to have to get a permit. And so it's a small thing tied on the end is that you have to, you're going to give your relief for parking. You know, because that's where we have the whole downtown. There's no parking on these stuff. So I don't see sending it to two boards. That should go to the border appeals.
Well, there, there were some, maybe Ralph can speak to this. We made some substantial changes to the parking bylaw as it now exists. It's actually quite a bit more flexible than it was before. And, um, and may, may resolve some of the issues that you guys are dealing with on a regular basis. So one of the reasons why, the, one of the main reasons why parking was put, and Ralph, you can chime in on this if you have anything to add. One of the main reasons why parking was changed to the, um, to the planning board was because we're looking at parking in the context of, you know, a more of a, a development or commercial or industrial or residential where there's going to be, you know, we're not talking about one or two parking spaces, you know, quite a few. And this, and under the, under the site plan review bylaw, we're, we're specifically charged with reviewing parking issues. And since we're likely to be doing that anyway, with any project of any significance, that it makes all the sense in the world to continue to have the planning board dealing with parking if, if there is a request from, for a waiver from one of the requirements and only if, I mean, if there's not a request for a waiver, it's, there's no, there's no issue. It's only if there's a waiver request. And it may, it seemed to make this all sense to have that waiver request. For example, we have the TOVOD, right? The thing around the train station. There may be a parking issue that comes up. We've got site plan review for, as, as we should. Well, if parking issue that comes up, we should be the ones who deal with it and not have to send it to another board who's going to have to run the project and do that as, as a separate entity. It, it, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to do it like that. So I, I, I don't know, Alan, if you've taken a look at the new parking bylaw team.
Good things in there. You change multi-families, only need one per unit, not, not one and a half. It's good things in there. Only, only in the site plan review you mentioned, that kicks into site plan review for planning board at six, at six or more units of parking. When you add six, if you want to build a parking lot, you just got to get the six parking spaces. You, you end up with a planning board under site plan review. We're looking at these small decisions that, that we don't feel that someone should have to go to another board. Like Houston kind of wrapped up in somewhere in yours. You shouldn't, if you're going to come in for the relief with your pizza parlors instead of your gift shop. You, you shouldn't have to go to another board to ask them for parking when there isn't.
So what, what size, what size parking issues are you, are you talking about?
What size, when they have zero and they're downtown in that, in the Baskin neck and the, that, the D, down at D Street. It's not that we can, you know, we, we want them to remain commercial. And the fact that they, well, even residential, you need one parking space for that. You, you're going to need relief from your parking. If you, whether you change that pizza place into a single family, you, you still need relief with the fact that there isn't a parking space.
I think Alan is mostly talking about these change of use permits that come to the, the board. Not, not so much a new development.
No, no, that triggers planning board. That goes planning board. You've got more than six parking spaces. You're, you're in site point of view planning board. That's the way it already is. And so I like the bylaw, other than the fact that the board should be able to issue our relief. And after when it gets big and they kind of big parking lot, it can be, can be plain. But we should be able to do a tie-in for these little places so they don't have to get tied down going to two boards.
So you're, you're talking about what you're saying is still an issue, even with the change in the parking bylaw. You're saying it's still an issue. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because it triggers, the way it's triggered, that, that, that little bit of relief mentioned in the bottom, because it says we issue, we're giving you a special permit, no parking. And, and all, like, like all the guys before you had, um, that line, we wouldn't be able to write that in. We'd have to say, you have to go to the planning board. And that's almost an annoyance for you guys to get this guy who, yeah, a building that never had any parking, still doesn't have any parking. It's nearly not, it's, it's heavy on the bureaucratic side.
Well, the same, Alan, may I speak, Peter? The same argument Jason that you made is that you don't want to go to two boards and you have some parking responsibilities. Many, many of our cases involve parking on a minor level. And we just make part of the case, part of the decision. And we should have the right to do that without referring them to another board, another hearing. Just wrong.
Well, the, the reason you get parking, uh, special permit is what? Because they need relief in the parking requirements? Is that, is that it?
Yeah, there's a number of reasons. I mean, any, any type of case, the parking becomes a, a part of it. You know, going from one to two family, uh, change of use, um, additions. There's a lot of reasons and we have parking in many of our cases.
And you're talking about changes of uses that fall below the threshold for site plan review?
Alan, can I speak up for that? I think as you were saying downtown is probably the best example. So it's been a little while since we've had one, but you know, a three-unit building on Baskin neck that was two commercial, one residential and has gone, you know, came to us for a change and used to go to residential, one commercial, but parking. So that thing.
Is that you, Amy, talking?
No, that was, but I was actually going to, um, to just throw something out there. So what if you had something in the bylaw that stated that the special permit granting authority shall be this, um, the Board of Appeals, unless there is a, um, addition or reduction of six or more spaces. And then it will be the planning board. And then there's flexibility on both sides.
Yes. Oh, yeah, that's fine. Sure. View would be tied into the relief. You know, your relief would be from the planning board for the bigger parking lot and site along with your site plan review.
That would work.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Let's not let's add a kick on that one. Peter, anybody in the board want to talk about that anymore? I'm ready to move on.
Yeah, unless anybody else has something to say, I think we can move on.
I guess the next thing would be, you know, housing balance is, again, those are all over town. We've always done the multi-families. And, and the border appeals feels that we ought to be doing the, the accessory dwellings and, and the multi-families.
But I, I'm having a hard time hearing you, Alan.
Oh, you couldn't hear that? Okay.
You dropped off at the end.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the border appeals unanimously feels that we should be dealing with the multi-families in, in the housing balance out of this bylaw. Uh, you know, it's just the same as the ADUs. We've, we've always done the multi-families. We did, we, you know, we, we've done them, not that many all over town. You know, we kind of like creating, creating new housing. I'll tell you, you know, you guys are right. I think that we're all unanimous in agreeing that we need this. But the border appeals is historically always done the multi-families as well. So the housing balance part of it, we still strongly should still be along with, with border appeals. In the decision-making process in the, in the special permits.
This is when you, just so we're on the same page. I think housing balance is on page, it would be page 44 of the most current, it should be on page 44. And it's, uh, it begins in order to assure that new residential development be granted special consideration under the zoning bylaw. And then, um, there is a list of criteria after that. And that would be section I, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, section I.
Yeah, okay. We're talking about the same one.
Yeah, we've always done the power buildings.
Okay. When I say okay, I'm saying, you know, we have to discuss this, but we're hearing what you're saying.
Sure, okay. Um, I guess at that point, there's some other member wanted to mention, talk about that, you know, to move on. A little explanation on the, on the coastal floodplain district. Can someone explain, the relief was, was wiped out. It mentions special permits in that, in that, in that section, uh, in the coastal floodplain district, but the, the relief, the relief on that is taken away. All the special permit language by the border appeals is taken away. What, what, what's the thought on that?
About this?
Jason, it's specifically when it mentions the special permit in there, it mentions special permit in there, but then, then there's no border appeals pot in the end. How do you get us?
Right, right. Well, that's what I want. I mean, I could address it, but I don't want to just keep on talking. I thought maybe Tom Mekus. Tom, you want to talk about this? Why, why that was taken out?
Yeah, I think in general, looking at climate change and the effect on coastal flooding areas that are in special flood hazard areas. I think it's to our long-term advantage to, to stop putting things in the flood zones.
Yeah, the idea is, the idea is we didn't want the planning board as a, as a policy decision decided that they did not want additional construction in, in these areas, period. Therefore, that's why it was taken out.
Baskin neck and, and most of downtown is in the flood zone. And should we have a catastrophic event?
We got a big problem.
You, you might have some issues with building back there if, if you don't provide some kind of relief.
Well, actually, I think the way this is written is that it's if there are other houses around it that are already there. And, um, that were built before this issue became an issue that it allowed the ZBA or any special permit authority to approve additional housing. So it wasn't like in a situation, Paul, like you bring up where it's, there's some kind of, you know, catastrophic event and the houses are all wiped out. This is to permit additional housing in an area where it would otherwise not be allowed. And that's, that was the point.
Well, okay, well, I got, Alan, that's good. In this, in this coastal floodplain district, uh, it mentions special permits at different times. And then, and then there is no place to go for special permits.
Who issues that? What are they for?
Well, we had them, we had them, but now.
The way it's listed in there now, it's a dead end.
The dead end, right. You, you've got. It was, but it wasn't.
Must be a mistake.
It might have been an error and needed to be taken out, um, above.
Which, which, where, where was, where are we here?
Page four, uh, let's see.
Sixty-one.
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 I believe so.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. What, tell me where.
No, not sixty-one. You're, you're out of coastal floodplain district at sixty-one.
Oh, forty, excuse me, forty-four. No, 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 I'm in the wrong place.
There's a deletion on.
Sixty.
Everybody, everybody out there, you got to make sure you're using the, the, uh, one that's, the planning board has marked up on the front page saying final version three, three, twenty, twenty-two, okay?
So, um, so it's under development regulations, which is D, and then it's F. Oh, D one, I'm sorry, D one F, where it says all development, including structural and non-structural activities, whether permitted by right or by special permit, um, must be in compliance with MGL chapter, um, one thirty-one, section forty. And then in, in one itself, it says, you know, whether permitted by right or by special permit, but that's really, um, in subsection F is what is supposedly allowed by, something's allowed by special permit. And it has to be compliant with the Wetland Protection Act, but then the special permit provision was taken out. So, so I think that's the confusion there.
Well, yeah, confusion in the writing of it. And that would mean that you have no place to go. On the F, it tells you to go see the special permitting authority, but on page sixty-seven, it's wiped out.
Right. There is an argument that could be made that, um, that what that, that basically means that any, any special permit that's already been granted has to comply with the Wetland Protection Act, but, um, I, I would agree that this is, um, this is a little confusing and contradictory that we're referencing special permits, but they're not allowed.
But they're not allowed. I think, I think that, you know, in the time being, page sixty-seven, she brought back. I have a serious worry about Paul Orlando is on today and Amy as well. I think it's very important that until this is cleared up, having to do a Baskin neck, this could be the year that you get wiped out down there. And it could happen anytime, right?
Well, yeah, but, but I think the one that was taken out in B, the Board of Appeals, it's, it talks about existing structures. So if the structures around it existing, it doesn't apply. It's existing structures. And that's.
That would be my biggest concern, with existing. It would be our biggest, right, Paul? Let me call Orlando, right?
Rebuilding structures. I mean, you know, not just a storm, but if you had a fire down Baskin neck, that could devastate a, a huge portion of the neck.
You've got to have somewhere to go.
So, may I ask, Amy, Amy, do you think that if we were to take out the reference to special permit, that the language as it stands now would prohibit rebuilding on Baskin neck or other floodplains?
Yes, without a variance. They would need a variance.
Yeah, go.
So isn't the relief available through a variance?
Well, well, there's a big difference between variances and special permits.
I understand.
Variances are really not supposed to be, um, they're not, they're really not supposed to be granted unless there's unusual circumstances. And I, I think that the issue that you might face, um, that I think Paul is talking about is if you did have something happen, you know, downtown or, or in Baskin, but you would, with a, with a variance, you have to show that you have some, your law is unique with soils, topography or shape that is unlike the zoning district in general. And I don't know how you would ever prove that in these areas. And I don't know how you would ever prove that in these areas because every lot is the same. They're all small lots. So I guess the only thing that I would ask either Paul or Ralph is that allowing 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 buildings in a floodplain, does that does that impact, you know, does that impact flood insurance at all with regard to FEMA? Is there an issue there?
If if somebody builds something below the flood elevation, they likely would not be able to get flood insurance and would not be able to get a mortgage on the property. So if you own a property outright, you're not required to have flood insurance on it.
Okay, but you could, you could, so you can rebuild in a floodplain, provided that you're above the elevation, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
There's there's real problems on Baskin. This thing better come back in the special permits. For the time being, the easiest way to do this, as Jason says, a living bylaw. Just in case this disaster happens this year, we should be bringing in the special permits. This board and the and the state regs are trying to build something new in the floodplain district. We are really tough on anything of this nature. This does not happen around town. But I think we need this thing to protect right now. You didn't bring back page sixty seven under the bylaw until which time we could tweak maybe this thing. But we can't leave the people and millions of dollars with the real estate on Baskin neck naked without without ability for some relief to rebuild after the fire.
I think, yeah, I think that's one scenario, but the other one is the one that we didn't want was that if they're existing houses and there's a lot that doesn't have a house on it, that someone could or create a lot that would allow a house to be built there by special permit. That's what we don't want. And so if there needs to be work on this to achieve both results, then we need to work on it to achieve both results.
Let's tweak it.
And what the planning board's considerations are. You're you're everyone looking at it in terms of a catastrophe, like a fire or a flood or something like that, which can happen, but we're not looking at it in terms of a catastrophe. We're looking at it in terms of the ordinary.
We have to look at it all.
We're looking at it in the ordinary course of business, and that's and those are the two considerations that I think need to be addressed, both of them.
Yeah, no, we would agree with you probably with the idea of the new construction limitation, sure. The the but the existing, the existing should not be held out without any place to go. If something happens this year, we shouldn't do this. It's a bad idea.
Yeah, I don't think we're, that's not, that's a, that's a consideration. If an existing structure is destroyed, that's one thing. But as I said, if if it's a matter of just wanting to fill in in a floodplain and trying to get a special permit for it, that's a different thing. So we need to, we need to take into account both concerns.
I think between now and May sixteen, I don't know if there's an answer to rewrite that between that somewhere.
I don't know either. I mean, that's, we'll have to talk to.
Simplest way, maybe bring this back, have an agreement that you're going to tweak it and take out some of that new new construction language or whatever and tweak it. In the meantime, that page sixty seven should probably go back in.
That's something that we're going to have to figure out. We have to.
I can't have my conscience feel, you know, you feel right voting for that, leaving those the the potential for a disaster downtown. If anybody wants to appeal a variance, you're going to win. You'll blow, you'll blow the variance right out of the water. So it could be a real big problem here. Paul, where are you on that?
I think the way the bylaws written, it doesn't prevent you from building in the flood zone. It prevents you from building beyond the high tide mark, the way the bylaws written. But for instance, down in Baskin neck, there are some buildings that if you were to rebuild them may have to be up to six or eight feet higher than the road level. And and that doesn't, it's not really conducive to that area to do that because you you would need to provide some kind of handicapped access to these shops. And if they're eight feet above the street level, you you might not be able to do that. And if and if you allow this by special permit, it would enable people to to build some of these shops or fix them should they get damaged.
I think we're all in agreement that we need to take that into consideration.
Good. Yeah, we haven't we haven't resolved anything tonight, but I think tonight that's another one we need to be thought about. Then we guess we get, if we moved on from that subject to to the new transit district, it would be an area that the board of appeals members are are in favor of seeing again handled by the board of appeals for special permits. It's the multi families, which we've always been doing. I like with the with the planning board's time with design and language, lots of controls, really like the look of it. I think the planning board did a very good job on this, but it's it'd be strange. It'd be strange for the board of appeals to have one, the overall eight districts in this district. So the way it would work right now is small matters in that district would be handled by the board of appeals that had to do with J Ray Smith wants to add an addition and part of their buildings is is in one district and part of it is another. I had to write that decision. So so if if one of these properties needs things other than adding adding the multi family elements with a fifteen units per acre and tripping into the into the new criteria, then the board of appeals would be handling both the way it's written now. And then the way it's written now, the if you went and did and he wanted to work with within the the bylaw and go with ten percent affordable, you would be dealing with the planning board. And then if you went to the twenty five percent affordable, you would be tripping into a into a comprehensive permit with plenty with forty B, and you'd be back over the board of appeals. So you'd have a level right now that would be the board of appeals, and then another level would be the planning board, and another level that would be board of appeals again. I think we should be consistent in the bylaw, and the majority on the board of appeals feels that way.
Guys, can I just mention something about the transit orient development that I noticed? In the dimensional requirements, it has minimum and maximum setback requirements. And and I'm not, I don't know why the why we would have a maximum setback requirement. If somebody wants to be more than fifteen feet from the property line, would they need to get a variance? Or or should we just get rid of the maximum setback requirement?
Ralph, where I can answer that. Well, that's a, that's a design feature because the the goal is to try and create a village type scenario, and you don't want to have large setbacks in a downtown type of setting. You want the buildings closer to the street and you know, it's not necessary to have buildings separated by large setbacks. So the rationale behind that is is purely a design feature to make it more walkable and to, you know, make it more of a village type setting in the traditional New England style as opposed to buildings that are set far apart from each other. And that's why there's zero setbacks for some of the lot types as well.
To encourage. You'd be forcing somebody to build a larger building so that they can comply with the maximum setback.
Or a shorter building.
Well, this is very common in this this kind of a setup where you have kind of a village look to have the have the house not be set back very far from the from the street and the sidewalk. That's that's why it's there. It's done lots of different places, you know, lots of examples of it. It's not a, it is a well used concept. And I I'm trying to, I was trying to go back to what Alan said. We with the TOBOD, we have, we have site plan review of that. And you were talking about some kind of special permit review. I I didn't, I missed that.
What I'm saying is that that's been written in, that's been written in that bylaw for the relief coming from the planning board. And the board of appeals feels that that relief, the relief for that property should come from like all the other multi families should all come from the board of appeals. This this district is only one district that would be dealt with by the planning board, kind of a little unusual to have one.
We we automatically have site plan review of this, so we're going to have that no matter what. So why wouldn't it make sense to have for us to have that and the special and anything that requires a special permit for this particular TOBOD?
Well.
Well, can I speak, Alan?
Sure, please, please, Peter.
You're going to fire me? Don't fire me. Given that special permit and keeping with some earlier conclusions we've made about bouncing ping pong balls back and forth, I'm inclined to agree with Jason in this particular case. That's the first time I've agreed with the planning board in thirty years, Jason, so you're making progress, buddy. Anyway, no, I feel that it's okay with the special permits. You've done the work. You got the guy there. Finish it off. End of story.
I think you're fired.
I hope so. Please.
We had this, this particular one, one of the five sitting members, we have a split vote. The majority is in favor of the board of appeals and the consistency factor, and the minority vote in favor of the planning board doing it. So just, you know, I guess in the end, you know, as the chairman, my my mission, my job is to relay the the decision of the board, and that's the vote, that was the vote, three to two.
Okay, well, is there, I I'm, we're kind of at the end of the amended bylaws. Does that mean you're at the end of your comments?
Let's see, Casey, anybody, Aaron?
Amen.
Anybody has some other things they want to talk about?
Well, if you don't mind me bringing up something kind of, well, in the definitions, and you have a carryout restaurant.
Oh, yes.
Right. I just want to clarify that. Does that mean that now we could have Burger King or McDonald's? Because it talks about carrying it out in a car. And I'm assuming you mean you can drive up in your car to the restaurant and put the bag of carryout food in your car, but it doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to be driving through a drive through restaurant.
I'm looking for.
Where is that taken in the bylaw?
It's on the very beginning and under.
Page ten.
Starts on page two.
That definition's on page ten.
Yeah. I mean, I I started with Lloyd Waring on the Board of Appeals, and Lloyd was vehemently against any any potential for restaurants like Burger King, McDonald's, or anything of that sort coming in.
Let's move the names of any companies out of there.
So there is, yeah, so so we cannot do that. So that wouldn't be the circumstance ever because the town would never do that.
That's right. Yeah, we we're not talking like that, Casey.
Sorry.
But let's let's talk about drive through restaurants is what you want to talk about, Casey, without any kind of discrimination.
Wait, I'm I'm missing this. Amy, what did you, what you come?
My comment was that the town would never would never prohibit a restaurant because of its name or or company. I I'm not sure, I don't, this is not drive through because if you look at it, it says restaurant carryout, carryout, and it says, and are served their food at a counter or in a motor vehicle in packages prepared to leave the premises. So a drive through would be different than that. The definitions that I that I've seen for drive throughs are different because a drive through also encompasses banks and things like that. So we could probably, we could probably tighten up this language, Casey, to 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 state that little or no seating, where most customers order and serve their food at a counter in packages prepared to leave the premises and just work out, you know, or motor vehicle.
Vehicles, right. I just wanted some clarification because when I read it, I wasn't really sure if you were talking about, as I said earlier, taking the food out of the restaurant and putting it in your car, or if you were talking about picking it up from the restaurant.
I think.
While you're driving in your car.
We don't, we don't generally use the definition section to define whether something's allowed use or not. We just define what it is so that we're clear in the use part, whether it's allowed or not. So we can define it's a carryout and disallow it in the other portions of it. But the zoning code right now has all sorts of things where things like bulkheads are defined in the definition, not in.
Right. That was the only other question I had.
Thank you.
Yes, and that's it. Any other member of board of appeals have something? Britta, did you have something?
No.
Anybody, Mr. York, Dick York, our newest member is is sitting in tonight. Good to see you, Dick. You're a member of the board. Paul, Paul Lando, how about you, Paul? Do you want to add anything today, Paul? Okay, and I thought the theme of tonight's meeting is in and.
Well, by the way, Paul's been, I have to say, Paul has been a great help. He's been involved in this process from the beginning, participated in the public hearings. He's been provided with the draft zoning laws, and he's given good input. So I'm assuming coming along for the ride tonight.
All right, Jason, I've got a question. If we're wrapping up conversation, I think it was a nice meeting tonight. Everything's been presented with the boards, where we are, the power board, and I think, thank you guys for listening. Should you guys open to another joint merit meeting at some point before town meeting?
I I can't answer that.
I guess I was going to ask a question, kind of what are our next steps? So.
That's what we need to, I think we need to talk with. We don't have to do it right at this moment, but we go over a couple of these things.
Yeah, that's what I, when I, I would be asking, I guess, and it's up to you guys to answer. I think from the planning board, from the board of appeals perspective, I think a, we will be having a meeting later in the month. We'll put this on the agenda to talk about bylaws. We don't have too busy a meeting. And and then you guys have some meetings coming up. After we both have some meetings, I I think we would like to, before a town meeting gets out in May, May sixteenth, I guess it is, or thirteen. What is that, May thirteen, sixteen?
Sixteen.
May sixteen, before the sixteenth, I'd love to have us go into this. If we could, maybe with some agreements, which would make it easy for the public, that's for sure.
Well, I'm I'm assuming that everything we've heard tonight from you is everything. There are other things coming up in two weeks.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's that's important because now we have to decide what we're going to do, how we're going to do it. And that's where our conference with Amy Cressel has to take place. But it doesn't, you know, really tonight is not the time to do that.
All right, we're, so we'll leave it this way, the way the board of appeals has asked for another meeting, joint meeting. And at some point in time, you can, you'll, you can make your decisions on that, and board of appeals will be discussing some of this again.
Alan, what would be the point of another joint meeting if you told us everything that you want to tell us?
Well, you can't tweak, you can't tweak the existing document. It would only be a possibility of another document going in if both boards could possibly possibly be on board.
Well, you know, look, yeah. Heard your comments, and and, you know, we have to discuss it among ourselves. And, you know, I can't tell you how it's going to end up. I mean, there's some, some of the comments were well taken. And, you know, we need, we just need procedurally, we are for a timeframe where we have to operate and have to get things done and get things finalized.
Okay, we're we're making our request for another meeting, and if you guys want to go down the line, let us know, okay?
Selectman Wilkinson has has her hand up. Sorry, Aaron. Selectman Wilkinson has has her hand up. Sorry, Aaron. Sarah?
Aaron, did you have a question, Aaron? Something you want to add?
Sarah can go first. No worries. Oh, go ahead, Aaron. You go first. It's your meeting. Yeah, I was just gonna say that I think Jason had a point about procedurally, it sounds like after this meeting, the planning board needs to talk with town council to figure out, you know, with the parameters of a public hearing, what changes can be adjusted, possibly given the feedback from the zoning board to the planning board. And we appreciate everybody being so open-minded to some of the things that were shared and being able to really hear both sides because I think oftentimes boards in town don't get an opportunity like this. So I think this was a great opportunity to to be able to hear everyone. And now from here, the planning board can discuss this with town council to figure out, you know, what what can be adjusted. Given that the public hearing has happened, if that means we have another public hearing, I'm not sure, but I do understand that, you know, there are steps that sort of have to happen after this that we may not be a part of. And if you could maybe, you know, send out an email after this, if it isn't a joint meeting, Jason, similar to one that you did previously with sort of like the outcome of the town council opinion, that would be great too, just so that we're all on the same page and that we're all sort of hearing the same comments about this process.
Yeah, no, that's that's fine. We've we've got a bunch of things to talk about. And the other thing I just and I've said this to some of there's already, don't forget, this is a this is a living, working document and some things which we might not complete this time around. It's it's we're we'll get to next time. And, you know, there's, you know, they're saying perfect is the enemy of the good. In other words, we're not going to make it perfect. There might be things that you don't like or you wish would be changed, but, you know, we have further town meetings to do that. Don't forget, this is probably the biggest amendment to the zoning bylaws. And I don't know, Peter, you've been around a long time. Have you ever seen one this big before?
Not even close.
Yeah, so. Thank you. So we've done. We've done a heck of a lot. And, you know, there are some problems. There are some inconsistencies here and there. And that's to be expected. So, you know, we'll get to it, but it may not be all in May 16th. But I would hope that would mean that people would be against things because it's not exactly the way that they envision it to be as of May 16th, you know.
Yeah, we have this one opportunity tonight to to talk about this. And in in wrapping up, I appreciate your comments, Jason, and we have this deadline above us. I do have to relay that that if without changes or some agreement here, the Board of Appeals would be against moving this bylaw forward.
Well, then that's your prerogative.
To know.
Yeah, no, we these changes, we find substantial changes. We're not not asking the little little tweaks. These are substantial enough that we want to make sure that that everybody understands that at this stage, the Board of Appeals would not be voting to approve this bylaw.
You got five votes at town meeting.
We did a lot more than that, Jason.
Could I say something?
Go.
Could I say something? Great. Yeah. So Sarah, Sarah Wilkinson from the from the Board of Selectmen. First, I just want to commend all of you guys for coming together, as Aaron said, and and, you know, and most of you said tonight, like, these are two of the most hardworking boards in town. And the goal is to, you know, if we make changes, to make changes that are gonna be, you know, make town and life here better for everyone. And I think that everyone has the same goal in mind. It's just how we get there that people are differing on. But just to note, Jason, I think that people were just just to be totally transparent. I know that at least some of the selectmen, myself included, I think we were expecting discussion from both boards, not just a presentation by the zoning board on their issues because just to be totally open, what's gonna happen now is at your next, you know, posted meeting, all of these same people are gonna come again and watch your discussion. So I think, you know, Amy Questle's here. It's not often that we're all in the same room. Maybe we could get at least Amy to lay out the next steps because if the goal is, which I think is really important, to all be on at least a similar page for for the special town meeting, May 16th. I think it's in our best interest to at least have some dialogue discussion about, hey, is is the planning board even open to the changes that zoning board made tonight? Because, you know, otherwise, we're kind of where we were before this meeting started. If we don't even hear that, some discussion.
Oh, I absolutely think we're open to them. Here. Here's the issue, Sarah, and here's the problem. Is that we've got to go through, you know, we've all taken notes. We never, we didn't get anything in writing, so we wrote it. We all wrote it down. We have to compare our notes. And then we have to decide, okay, which ones would make sense and which ones should maybe either be put off or or just can't agree to. And then we need to talk with Amy and figure out, okay, do we need to? You know, if we're gonna do this, do we need to renotice a public hearing? For one or more of these proposed changes? Or can all of these be made just by, you know, the planning board on its own by a vote? So those are the things that, you know, at least I'm not prepared to sit down in this meeting and go through all the comments that were made without reviewing them first and then going over them with Amy in this meeting and then and then talking to her. You know, and trying to get an idea of what's what may require a public hearing and what won't and what's your timeframe. It's just too much.
Jason, may I speak?
Well, wait a second.
Okay, yeah, then if that's the case, Jason, which I understand, I think that some of us just were under a different impression, then you should probably just schedule another meeting, another joint meeting, because I think that in terms of keeping the dialogue open and transparent, like, then you guys should digest it and then just meet again.
Yeah, we need to digest it. We need to narrow down where we are. I mean, let's, I'm just throwing this out. If we we say, yeah, 80% of what was discussed for changes we're we're good with, we only have 20% where we're not, or we have questions or whatever, then we don't need to talk about that 80% all over again. But it's a matter of, you know, we have to figure out our time. We may need to have another spec, maybe need to discuss a special meeting. I'm not saying we wouldn't have another meeting with the ZBA. I'm just saying, like, we may not, it may come to a point where we don't really need one. I don't know. I mean, we we just don't know yet. So
Can I?
Think it's.
Can I ask a question?
Try to figure this out. It's 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 too tough for us to do.
Okay, can I hit the floor for a second here? Want to talk to Amy, just Amy, I want I wanted to allow you here and and I want to give advantage of you procedurally. So if an agreement of of any number of these things tonight happened, would there be would there be an ability to have an addendum, an addendum or some thing handed to somebody at town meeting that these are the list of things that you'd be able to look at that since the last time there was a public, a public hearing, the the two boards have wanted that we were going into and in, we're gonna have to try to modify. They're gonna be they're gonna be changed at town meeting. They can't be done before that. It's written. It's not. It's filed. But but a write-up could be printed. Can you define how any of that would possibly happen?
Sure. So so the only the only requested revision that I see as problematic with regard to the 48 section five public hearing that the planning board has already had is the is the changes to the coastal, to the floodplain. Because that actually is a substantial change by the the public was noticed that the Board of Appeals section would be deleted and it no longer is going to be deleted. So so that is a substantial change. With regard to the special permit granting authority being either the Planning Board or the Zoning Board of Appeals, that I do not see as substantial changes. Under 48 section 1A, the definitions, the special permit granting authority is either the Planning Board, the Board of Appeals, or the Board of Selectmen. So I don't really see that much as being, you know, much as being a substantial change. You know, with regard to some of the comments that have already been made and just from a from a practical standpoint, the zoning board, you know, the Board of Appeals, they've argued persuasively that people shouldn't have to bounce in between boards for permits. But yet, with regard to the transit section, you know, you would, if if the Board of Appeals is going to, you know, try and have some kind of special permit granting authority under that section, you would have people bouncing in between because no matter what, you need site plan. And so and then the other thing I just wanted to point out is that under the Housing Choice Act, the the transit section is very important. It's very important to keep that, you know, to keep that in. I Rockport is ahead of most of my communities by having this bylaw ready. And, you know, MAC, MAPC is an excellent, excellent resource. They know what they're doing. You know, I'm pretty confident with the changes that they've made. I did send some, you know, comments back to, you know, back to the town on some of these things, my my comments, anything that's changed. Anything that's gonna change regarding my comments would be my, you know, nothing. I don't think anything substantial. But yes, with these minor changes that I don't think are substantial that require a new 48 section five public hearing, we could do a handout at town meeting. We've done it before and other things, but a handout explaining what the difference between the warrant and what the new, what the motion will, you know, will now be. You know, things like that. Obviously, anything with regard to, you know, procedure at town meeting that is without a doubt, the moderator's purview and whatever, you know, whatever he thinks is acceptable is fine. But but I I know that we've had handouts before.
Hey, Amy, I have a question on that because I'm I'm glad to hear that that there's only one.
Well, that's that's just from tonight, Jason. You can't. You can't hold me to that.
Believe me, I I'm I'm on the same page. That's why I said what I said. I mean, it's there's a lot here and, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot either. But let's assume that whatever changes, like changing from the planning board to the to the ZBA, for example, using that as an example. We could, since there is no warrant yet, could because we're, this is May 16th, it's a special meeting. We could actually, the planning board could actually make that change to the bylaw as it is now. In other words, do another revision to include those changes. And then so then when it finally wasn't in the warrant for for May 16th, it would be there already. We wouldn't have to do.
Okay.
Right? Is that? Does that make sense?
Provided that you meet the timeline for for the warrant and the printing of the warrant.
Right, I think we will. I think we'll be able to do that. So that is an important question.
Right. I might have answered Sarah's question right there.
I have a question, Amy, with respect to the coastal floodplain provision. If we were to modify that to take into account the catastrophic events that were brought up, you think that would require a special hearing or is that more like amending the language in in a way that's not substantial?
Probably not. I'm just looking at it right now really quickly. You know, so so under B, Board of Appeals, number one, it says in the coastal floodplain district, the Board of Appeals may grant a special permit for new construction or substantial improvements. You know, I I mean, we could just delete new construction and and that would you know, that that might make, you know, both that might make everyone happy. And then I'd have to look at it and see what was advertised and what was discussed. I I I really suggest that any change that is done, you know, to the coastal floodplain section, you know, be be definitely, you know, have Paul weigh in because he has to issue building permits in the floodplain. And so and he has to, you know, he has to deal with FEMA and all that stuff. So you know, you know, that that section references substantial improvements. And I know that FEMA has a definition of substantial improvements. And so we want to just make sure that Paul's comfortable with any change to that section.
Makes sense. Yep.
Okay. I think we're done.
Jason? Tom has a question.
Tom, yeah.
Yeah, just a comment. Looking forward to the special town meeting and how these would be voted upon. I understand that the portions that require a majority vote will be broken into three pieces and the portions that require two-thirds would be several. I don't know if it's four or five. But in any case, I would hope that if the two of our boards cannot come to same, to be on the same page on a particular issue, that would not come to voting against everything.
Well, that's up to whoever votes.
I'm expressing my hope.
They can vote against everything if they want. As as Tom was saying, we're we're it's gonna be divided up between those sections that require only a simple majority. For the basically the ADUs, the TOBOD and the open space residential development all require only a simple majority. The remainder of the changes require the usual two-thirds majority. So what the idea is for the warrant to break these things up into at least, at least at a minimum, four pieces for four different votes, but probably more like six or seven. So in other words, one may voted, may not be approved, and one may be approved, you know, and it 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 depends on how how it shakes out. But you know, look, people can vote any way they want. I mean, we're gonna do the best job we can to try to make everybody as happy as they as we can, but we may not make everyone happy about everything. I know there are people who are unhappy about it already. So, you know, it's just it's just the way it is.
I think we did it tonight. Let's let's wrap it up. I think we're ready to wrap it up, folks.
Okay.
We're good. But thanks, guys, for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you, Amy.
You.
Mitch, everybody, Paul, Lando, Rich, John, and we'll be here for everybody.
Okay, so both boards need to go through and do an adjournment. One of the times it's doing adjournment. So planning, why don't you do your adjournment first and we'll do zoning.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion that the planning board adjourned from the special meeting. Second.
Motion made by Harry, seconded by Tom. We'll call vote. Harry, motion.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Denise.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
And I'll vote in favor. That's five in favor of adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Thanks, guys. Board of Appeals, I hear a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn. This is Peter.
Motion been made by Peter Burkhart.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
See, Tacy has San Antonio seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing nine. Britta?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Judy?
Hi.
Casey?
Hi.
And I vote aye. Thanks, everybody, for your time.
Amen. Good night.
All right, good night, everyone. Thank you.
All right.
7:32.